Interesting, I'm surprised.
Welcome to the commissioner's meeting. I'd like to invite you to join us in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're through the minutes of the October eighteenth, twenty twenty R.P. I make a motion to approve the minutes. I have a second to motion. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, please say aye. Motion passed. Page two. Page one. Page two. Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve all claims as presented. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve all claims as presented. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. And now we are down to County Highway Engineer Kent Schumacher. Just walked in, we got you up, Kent.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I like quick meetings like that. I just wanted to give you an update on what's going on. All the community crossings paving has been completed, did that, finished that up since Thursday. So, we're now adding shoulders to all the paved roads that were just recently done. And after that, we're going to need to preneed years paved roads. I'm going to get those edges tight. I'll be sending out a proposal for striping roads today and also a proposal to design public bridges for next year. That's all I have.
Any questions from you, Dylan? What bridges, what bridge numbers are being had? Location.
Well, let me send that to you, I can't move the walk-in. We just had the draft inspection report for the bridges done. And he gave you a list of what the next bridges that should be done, so I'll make those for you. Yep. I will.
Well, I've got one question for you.
Okay.
I'm having trouble remembering the road number. If you go south here on thirty-nine, where you're almost into Clinton County. While you were on vacation, I called over and talked to Bob about there's a corner there that trucks are going around.
Off thirty-nine?
Yeah, well, it's a half mile off thirty-nine to the west. It'd be five hundred south, it's the north-south road, and I can't remember what the east-west road is. It'd be seven hundred, probably seven hundred. I just wondered, he said I'm gonna send somebody out by the way to look at it. I didn't know if you'd heard anything about that or not.
I have not. I'll get with him and find out.
I appreciate that. There's a drop-off about that far off the side of the road in front of his house. And for some reason, the GPSs are sending some semis to turn off the highway. They go down about a half mile and then turn and go back to the highway again. Because the highway slants up through there, so they just go around a triangle. And as they try to make that curve, they're dropping down off of there. And his well is only a few feet away from that, and he doesn't want...
I understand.
Yeah, so, yeah, get with Bob on that.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, anybody out here have anything for us? Here. Okay. Then we will move on ahead to Bob Burke.
Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. Good morning, Dylan. I have a few things I would like to ask you. We have a couple trees at Deer Creek Park. One is a huge sick horn right near the community building. The top of it is dead. We have another huge dead ash tree, that's to the east of that on the hillside. They're both up in the hillside. But they really can't be gotten to with the bucket truck because of the springs and wet weather right now. I discussed it with two different tree drivers, I got two different estimates. And I was just wondering if I could get some help from the county on some maintenance issues that parks and that was one of them. These are things that are not allowable in our budget that we have right now. I can give you a copy of the estimates if you'd like to.
Do you have them with you? They're just, what, just tell us where all of them are?
Well, the first one I got was from Wildcat Tree Service, Wildcat Creek Tree Service. They were the company that cleared the eastern part for the drain, the Deer Creek drain up there. It was for eight hundred and fifty dollars.
For both trees?
For both trees. Now, what they're going to do is just drop them to the east in the woods. And whatever comes out or whatever's in there, the park board, the Robert Cooksey and I and whoever else volunteers will clean that up, and we provide firewood for the campers for the summer. So that's what we're going to do with that. So that's the price, just drop the two and...
Is that somewhere, sorry, Bob, is that somewhere highway guys can come over and drop?
I don't know.
Could you go look at that?
We can take a look at it. Tate's Tree Service, I got an estimate from them. It was eight fifty from Wildcat Creek Service. Tate's, who is here in Carroll County, I had them personally do a job for me, and they've done a lot of jobs in our neighborhood. He priced it at six hundred dollars. He's talking about slingshot, he's got a very powerful slingshot that he can slingshot up into the forks of those and get their pull rope on them, and he explained the whole secrets to them, how they do that. And so he's going to do the exact same thing as what Wildcat Tree Service had recommended either that they do. But they're just going to drop them. And that was the two prices on those. The other thing is this septic tank up there, with the amount of usage that we are having for campers, and there is a dump station, there is used as a dump station and a septic. So basically, I'd say more of this time, the dump station is, you know, filling it up a little bit on usage from the restrooms. A lot of the campers have restrooms in, the RVs. I need to have someone take a look at that. And I was going to go to your son, actually, and ask him for a quote on that. I had pulled the cap off and took a look in there, and I don't know anything about septic dead pumping, but that pipe that goes in there goes down and at an angle, and it's small. I don't know, it's not like, you know, a lid that's on an old septic tank. It kind of curves and goes down and reduces as it goes from the top of the tank.
Right to the creek. Does it go right to the creek?
No, 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 it's not going right to the creek. This is coming from the buildings themselves. And the tank is separate from the community building.
Have you ever had pumps since you've been involved with the park?
Never, never. It's time that we need to look at that. And, you know, the, like I said, I hate to ask for this, but it's areas that I cannot cover with our maintenance budget that we get, you know, yearly.
American Pumping just up the road, right?
Right.
My son, he didn't have a truck, a pumping truck anywhere sold.
Pardon?
My, my son sold his pumping truck.
Okay, so I'll get with American Pumping and get an estimate, see if they can look at it, give me some ideas on that for the year. The hillside, since I've been on the board and I've been on the board a couple times, has, it's a gravel driveway. And it goes down over the hill, and you guys are all familiar with that. This year... Pardon?
Washed out bad?
Yeah, it's washed out bad, and it's creating multiple washes. I'm not sure if...
Alright, guys.
They graded that up. I could tell that they had graded it at one time this year, maybe more, but I'm not up there every month or every week or whatever to check that out. But I went out and measured that, and I think that if we could go from the top, from the flat part of the top to the flat part of the bottom, which is approximately a hundred and twenty feet by twelve feet wide, we could alleviate that problem. The way it's been this year, I am really surprised with a two-wheel drive truck to get a camper out of there, you know, without spitting out. Because it's just, it's running about six inches wide, three or four. Lord has been involved in helping us grade on his own time, you know, from time to time over the years. So you know exactly what it's doing. It's only getting worse. And with the amount of traffic that we have now with our campers, I think we need to kind of bring that up into the twenty-first century.
So what you're suggesting is that some of the, we chip seal or something?
You know, I'm not, I'm not a, I don't have a lot of knowledge about that. But chip seal, if we can get the edges to where they don't go away, you know, because if we get pavement on there, hopefully it would run over the pavement and go away at the bottom of the hill.
Well, if we put a tile on the top to keep it from running down. Because it's coming off of the area coming down that one area.
It just comes right off the top of the hill. If you put a tile on it, you would have to put in a large, large drain, and then you would still have to have some sort of drains to get it away from the bottom of the hill.
But you need stone right now, right?
We can get by with it right now. It's nothing that is pressing. The season is close, the season's close. These are things that I'm looking for for twenty twenty-two, looking at.
Go around with that man right there and get him involved with you.
Yeah, work with Kent. Kent, we've always found that out there.
Yeah, I have a problem working with him on that.
Okay, yeah, we need to, the other one, and it's just pothole filling, driveway stoned, and some of them, you know, if the highway could get us a load of that at the French Coast Park, that's about all that's needed.
French Coast, okay.
So those are the maintenance issues that I had that we just aren't able to cover out of our budget. The twenty twenty-one budget, I'm happy to announce, because I just want to make you aware of it. Our total budget was ninety-five hundred and fifty dollars for the year. We have generated, the season's over, we have generated fifteen hundred dollars back this year. So that is, that is the best year that I have in recollection, so. Also, one other thing, two other things. Paula Foster Bean is on our board now, and she is and was the steward for French Coast Park. She's going to be traveling next year, she doesn't seem, I think she'll have the time to put into this. She is going to resign at the first year, which I will bring you a letter of resignation. I would like to ask you to appoint Greg Nipple. He's from Rock Creek Township, he was a former trustee in Rock Creek Township. He's very passionate about French Coast Park. He's been helping me all fall and summer, do different projects up there. He's retired, he's just, he likes to do that kind of stuff. So I would like to appoint him as a new board member and the steward of French Coast Park.
I'll make that motion ready while you're on, if I can.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to appoint Greg Nipple to the park board. Now, does that include, what about being the steward out there?
Yeah, he has agreed, he has agreed to collect the monies and take the phone calls. And one of the things that I wanted to ask you, which the park board now and the people that handle the money have to go through the seminar, it's even required to do that, so.
And he's a steward.
I'll get with you and schedule that so he can come in for a...
He'll have one tomorrow at one o'clock.
You do?
In here, with the button.
Okay, I will see him tomorrow, I mean, today.
Okay.
We gotta vote, yeah. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. One other thing, I just want to make you aware, if no one has been out to the parks this summer. We, we had a donation fund that had set dormant for quite a few years. That was raised by, I think, dinners at the previous park board that I've had at Deer Creek Park. A Mark Smith, the county historian, he had mentioned, called me and mentioned that he takes groups of senior citizens from nursing homes and things like that on bus tours of historic sites. And he said that there was nothing at Deer, or at French Coast Park. So we got together, I got prices together, we have a very nice marker for complete history from the time that DeRay, the French trader, came in and up until it was created and dedicated as a park in nineteen twenty-three. So it's very nice, it sets right at the entrance to the park. Next thing, next thing we're gonna do is try to track down the chiefs of the tribe, the Bonwattanbee tribe that was in there, and put on the, the wear of their commemorative hats also. So just wanted to make you aware that we did use our donations fund for that, and I thought it was a very big cause right there. And that's all I have.
So you're, you're gonna call American Pumping?
Yes, I'll, I'll get prices.
And you're gonna work with Kent on the driveway?
And maybe he agrees.
And the trees?
Yeah.
He probably has a gadget to probably drop them.
Well, what was the second guy's?
Six hundred bucks, so.
What?
Only two, six hundred bucks. Oh, you counted. Did somebody have, were two of the guys up there?
Yeah. What, what was the name of the second tree company?
I can give you these if you like, right?
I like those, yeah.
I have those. Thank you. There's three copies of each quote.
Tate's Tree Service?
Tate's Tree Service is located here in Carroll County, in Wildcat Creek, it's out of Lockyett. But they're really big trees, and if they, if the one would, the top would go out of it or the tree would go, it can go right in the middle of the campground, or it's approximately fifty feet or less from the Sheldon House, the Clubhouse. The other one is on down. We have a Boy Scout project where they build a awning and roof with picnic tables up there. We've done that, and we have a whole playground set right there. And it's going to go way out into that area, so what can we...
I, that's one last thing, where are you guys gonna pick? Is there anywhere that you can transfer within your budget?
Six hundred dollars?
Mm-hmm.
At this time? Next year, I don't know.
Maybe you're getting close to the end of the year, do you have?
If possible, I would have to review that, and I haven't done that. But there was other things for this year that will probably take up the majority of that. But for a six hundred dollar chunk to come out for two kind of guys, I don't, I don't... You know, a couple line items that I do have that much money in, which I, basically, if one, maybe two, they would just wipe it out.
You have the trash at the end of the year, do you need it for something else?
No, I can totally wind up.
Just total all your line items, make a transfer, get it done by the end of the month, and we'll prove this.
Thing about it is with electricity and things like that, I don't know what's going to be left out of that budget. Trash removal, we're bringing some things to the county auction, emptying out the garage up there. We have all these mowers, pushbowers, riding mowers that haven't been used for years, but we need to get rid of them, and that's the only way to get rid of them. With the picnic table storage, and that's the reason we're cleaning out the garage is to store picnic tables for the year, so. There's going to be some trash removed and cleaned up in the basements, so the dumpster's going to stay a little longer. Just a lot of circumstances that's beyond my control right now in order to get a total for what I'm going to...
Do you need your representatives from the council to help you do your budget? Do you know who that is?
I think it's Doc, so.
I would get with Ken and work with him and see what you can crunch.
Might have to, thank you. You need to, a year from, well, from that last summer when you're doing, putting the budgets together, you need to have a little money in there for maintenance, for like pumping.
We do have building maintenance in our budget and things like that.
Grounds maintenance or something too.
They used to have a mowing line, but since we took over the mowing, it's, you know, it got taken away from them while...
I didn't know if you, if the commissioners had a budget that they could work with on maintaining the county properties. So that's, that's the reason I'm here, to ask about those, to find out.
Is it possible for you to look over your budget and come back to us in two weeks and tell us?
Yeah.
Sure. I'd like to do that.
Okay.
That doesn't work, why?
You want me to look back to it?
Sure. Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One other thing I was going to say, Bob?
Yeah.
Is if we do have somebody like this do that, you need to make sure they have a certificate of insurance on file.
Okay, and they don't do that.
Okay, that we need to have it.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, when they gave your quote, they showed you.
Sure. Well, basically, it wasn't, well, you know, it wasn't, so, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, area plan, Cameron. Morning, Cameron.
Morning. Last week at the monthly APC meeting, we had a petition to, we had a petition to rezone a property at my sportsman. I bought Lake Freeman. Mr. Bernard is president. It was, if I'm correct, it was at one time attached to the sportsman's parcels, which he has lived there for some years now, and it's still zoned. As you can see, B1 general business, it's not affiliated with the sports anymore, he's wanting to just finance it. We've had several of these this year. This one's pretty cut and dry, it's no longer a business, it's a dwelling.
We can run over the business circle?
We're in circle there, so the, the one that's outlined, you can see the outline. Can you put that, I'm sorry. I just wanted to show you the business part of it, where it goes from the way it is.
They didn't give me any more information.
So the sportsman, the sportsman's highlighted there, he's to the, to the east of it right there. So it's no longer affiliated with the sportsman, it's a dwelling, he's lived there. Can't get financing with B1 zoning, it doesn't have anything to do with the business no more. So he petitioned to have it rezoned from B1 to L1, which, as you can see from another paper, that whole area right there on the lake side is L1 zoning, so. Board made a favorable decision to present you guys for final approval.
I'll make a motion to, make it from being one down one, I'll second. I have a motion and a second to change this property question from, from B1 to L1. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I got a feeling we're gonna have to see some more of these from him.
I'm working on a mixed-use zoning that's more incorporated towards Burlington, Camden, town like that. We've had some issues with the, in nineteen fifty or the nineteen sixties, they expected a lot more business, it just never happened, so homes were put there. So I'll be presenting that to you guys, once we get it advertised, and I want to approach and speak with all the incorporated towns, Burlington, Camden, Yeoman, and then once we get to that step, I'll present it to you guys. But we're getting quite a few of these, but this one's pretty, pretty cut and dry. I mean, it's not affiliated with the sportsman at all, and he's lived there, so it's tricky to get funding for that or finance it, so.
Aye. Do we get them starting here?
Probably, these are some I brought to you guys. One of them.
What's that?
So this is probably one of these, this is what I brought to you guys. That's all I got.
Trying to get to work, Eddie.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we are ready to jump down now to Jake Adams. Morning, Jake.
Good morning. I appreciate your time this morning. Relatively large topic to discuss. The Economic Development Corporation, in partnership with the Carroll County Redevelopment Commission, approximately nine months ago, began to undertake a plan and a public policy that will allow us to boost or jumpstart residential growth in the county. And so the redevelopment commission at that time, after looking through maybe what residential TIF policy could do for our community, decided that that was something they wanted to move forward with and, and partnered with, with the EDC to try to help with navigating the regulatory process of that. And so when we began that process, we, we did a couple of public meetings, community discussions, to get some feedback on residential growth areas. I guess the main target for us was, if we were going to do residential TIF, is try to identify key growth areas that meet some kind of metric. So we're not identifying areas of growth that are just arbitrary. And so our plan really incorporated for the county specifically two areas around Flora and Burlington that would be, have a high propensity for residential growth. And so today, presenting on behalf of the redevelopment commission, the resolution to adopt the residential TIF allocation areas for the county. So this would be the redevelopment commission's expansion of their areas that would encompass residential growth financing, instead of commercial financing that you would typically see within the redevelopment area now. So I wanted to kind of start with that and then see if you had questions. RDC President Larry Trapps here, Miriam, our attorney from the EDCs here, just to help fill in any gaps, have a good discussion. Ideally, this is the final regulatory step before it goes back to the redevelopment commission for adoption. And I think, have we, as we've discussed it, to try to figure out where the gaps could be, where there's concerns, there has been some changes, as we got feedback from the community. But this, this resolution has passed all regulatory bodies unanimously so far. And that would include the, out of redevelopment commission, through area plan unanimously, the Carroll School Board of Trustees approved this resolution unanimously, including an MOU that kind of outlines the communication chain between residential growth and the redevelopment commission, and how we can work together with the school corporation if there is a housing growth in those areas. How can the redevelopment commission help support an influx of students, infrastructure, whatever's needed? So we did reach an agreement with that with the Carroll Schools, and so here, here, to present to you gentlemen on, on this resolution, so.
I'm trying to figure out how to phrase my question here. Okay, first you said this is in Burlington and Flora?
Correct, they're, they're currently...
Are they at Burlington?
Yep, so we have four parcels, and were you able to... Yep, that is, yes, ma'am.
Did you send us that resolution to the email? I know I've got something in terminal, you're calling me.
Yes, sir.
I think we're going to talk right there.
Yep, so let's... There it is. So I'm trying to get it all in the map, but we'll start with, we'll start with the original TIF area right there. So you guys are obviously familiar with that.
Right, we changed only one of the...
Yep, so you guys had that original option. So the orange line, in order to have residential TIF areas due to the two thousand and nineteen state legislature, you have to tie nexus to economic areas. So I can't just, we can't just create a, a TIF area that doesn't have any correlation to its commercial TIF, which is Indiana Packers itself. So the eighteen thoroughfare is our connection by, by law, the way we've written it, to incorporate those three specific parcels in Flora. And so ideally, this residential growth would tie directly to the, if there is funding, to the commercial TIF areas. That's how that's done. And those three parcels, when we went through this, it was pretty exhausting. We went through and just tried to find some key attributes to residential growth that was going to be, that these parcels, or parcels around Flora, really met. So it can't have what length of limitation. So, it can't have wetland delineation, it can't be in a flood plain, it's gotta have good drainage, zoning if possible, infrastructure, that's continuous, so we're not building, we're not saying possible residential growth here, and then it's two and a half million dollars for infrastructure. So, we really tried to look at it, and it had to meet some, some key criteria, and these parcels specifically, and we've worked with the landowner on all of these parcels, at least, not direct, I haven't spoken to him, but through a realtor, to basically let them know that these are areas that we'd like to identify as residential growth, what are your thoughts? And I think that they were favorable, and we're not talking about this year, five years, this could be twenty, twenty-five years, but just to allow these areas to have financing available for future revenues that normally you couldn't do in the past.
Okay, wait, that was my second question. When you speak of financing, this would be financing for infrastructure, right? Not for individual property? I mean, I wanna build a house, or I don't see financing from you for that, right?
Correct.
This is for the street, the, the sewer, water, okay?
Yeah, and it doesn't mean we have to finance, I think this is just a tool that we've used, I mean, Indiana Packers isn't here without the TIF tool, financing that infrastructure and getting them on site. So, the idea when the state legislature created this policy was to allow communities to have that finance incentive in place for parcels. So, if we get a developer that says, you know what, Jake, I really like that south parcel, the landowner's willing to, to maybe work with us in, in, in developing it, and then they can go ahead and go, and, and we just use that TIF tool if they need a lift station, if that's something they're asking for, curbs and sidewalks, things that just make, make the project cross the line. Ideally, we don't wanna use any public financing to get a project through, but, but this is a tool that the state legislature has said, communities, please use this to incentivize getting projects. And then I'll show you, this would be, this would be, that would be the blacktop, so you can see the, that short orange line, that would be the colored blacktop. There has been some residential growth over that area, I have spoken with Burlington directly, they have seen this reviewed, they, they're not an improving body of this, but certainly we wanted their, like, where do you guys see growth, if there was, and this was an area, because there has been some residential development on the north side of that road, is that five hundred, so this would be another way to connect. That's a, that's a, that's a commuter base right there, Burlington is a community town, a community, so it is appealing for residential growth through that aspect.
How many acres are there of that?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know.
Is that one owner?
Yeah, yes, that is correct, that is one owner. So, these will be by parcel. So, I would say about thirty acres plus on this, with access, ease of access to State Route twenty-nine on the east side, and then five hundred on the north side, so.
Then what needs to be incorporated into the town later on?
So, the idea was that, that if they do, if, if they only use the TIF financing, but the town wants to help extend infrastructure, that, yes, that eventually the, the town would have the opportunity to incorporate east growth areas, if possible, so.
And you said Flora, you said Burlington, you're living in Flora, don't live in town?
Uh-
Their council?
I haven't, I didn't address the, the body as a whole, but I did make some phone calls with, I spoke to about this, Darryl, I've talked to this, about this extensively, Rob as well, so I haven't approached the body as a whole, but certainly I spoke to individuals. There's been an overwhelming support for this, I, I believe that we've had a few phone calls really constructive. What about my parcel, you know, what does this mean, does it change anything on the taxes for us, and obviously-
Does it change anything on taxes for us?
No, so, so the land, the landowner of the resource, there are zero changes for them. If anything, it adds value, to some degree, conceptual value for sure.
Is only the green areas gonna be the TIF, you know, will expand it out into the other areas?
I think this is a good start. So, can we change it in, in a couple years from now, if there's other areas, or if we get a residential development project, that a developer says, I wanna go here, Jake, but I need TIF financing, you might find me back this way, saying, hey, we'd really like to throw this, this parcel in as well, and they really would like some, some financing, so. Yeah, that, so to answer your question, you know, this could change, this was just, it's a new, it's new policy, it's new sticky, we didn't wanna take off too big, we certainly wanna provide some, support some areas of growth. I have vetted this with, with some builders in the area, in the region, just to say, what do you think about this, if this is doable? And they, this is what we came up with, so.
So, what is it specifically you're asking us to, to come up with?
Yeah, so the resolution in itself outlines these parcels specifically, so you, so if, as this goes through, this will allow GLGF to identify these parcels as, as basically TIF parcels, and include them into the allocation area. So, any improvements that are made, if it is a development project, wouldn't be captured within the, the original TIF allocation area. And that's not the goal of this, and the RDC's expressed that, they don't want to collect more taxes, more so, they wanna be able to incentivize financing for projects, and that's been the main goal.
I just checked my email, the proposal wasn't in, just described what you said, what you were gonna talk about, have you had a chance to look at that?
Yes, I did, I got it through the email, like, I don't know if that's-
Maybe I'm just not smart enough from the email.
Yeah. Well, since it's in an unincorporated area, and it's, it's changing the, basically, the jurisdiction of the economic development area, it requires a commissioner's approval, and as Jake said, everybody else has approved this, so it's a zero cost to the county, it's a, it's a tool to attract residential growth to communities that are already in existence. I'm personally glad to see that it's close to areas that are incorporated, so that they're not just out, out in the open, you know, and that, and you have services to provide to them, they're, they're close to incorporated areas where services are already, already existing, it makes sense.
I guess a lot of pressure off of the rule.
Yes.
So, what number, keep, keep residential growth within residential areas?
Okay, now, the TIF captures money, there's the increase in taxation, but if this is agriculture area, and just sitting there waiting, there isn't gonna be any increases, is there? Okay, so how, how is it, how is this accumulating any money, if this just stays agricultural? I mean, that money still goes to the same people it always went to, I'm not saying it's variable, but I think we're getting-
Nope, you are, yeah, as long as there's, if there's no improvements, then there's no improvements, and there's no excess AV, and, and the baseline stays the same, so, yeah, and if there is improvements, then, then, yeah, the RDC can return that funding back to its, to its local units. And I, it's my understanding, and we've said it multiple times, is that as long as there's no debt on that area, if there is improvements, then the RDC has intentions on returning those allocations back to the local taxing units and not collecting it, so, yeah, as long as there's no improvements, if it's farm ground, it's farm ground, and it'll stay that way, and there's, there's no excess AV to collect.
I'm having trouble understanding how, how it starts, where, what, kind of chicken and egg thing, I don't quite understand there. If you're gonna capture the increased money, it's coming in on taxation because of improvements on property.
Correct.
But you're needing money to start to building those improvements here, so how does?
So, so TIF, TIF is, is the only way that, that governments can capture future revenues. So, so that's how this works, is that Baker Tilly comes in, or a finance firm comes in and says, looks like Jake, you're gonna have twenty homes or twenty-five homes at this price, here's what your future revenue is going to be year to year. And so, they'll allow the redevelopment commissions to bond that future revenue, so if it's gonna be three and a half million dollars over thirty years, and they know that revenue's coming in because of that development project, then you can now borrow three and a half million dollars, and then that provides capital. Now, once the improvement's done, then those new homes that are valued at a higher rate than the original ground was, would then be collected by the redevelopment commission, so, and then every year they decide what they wanna do with that money, whether they keep it or, or pass it through to the local units. So, yeah, the, the chicken is really the financing of future revenue, which municipalities can't do without TIF allocation areas. And then, once it's built, then that revenue is collected to pay off that bond within the redevelopment commission. So, oh, it is, it, it gets early there, but yes, it's-
That financing part is a part I didn't, didn't know, okay, so that works, okay. Yes, Scott?
Jake, I've got one question. If, if bonds are left for a particular project, you stated, you know, it's up to the TIF to make the decision whether to pass that money back in, or back through to the local incorporated towns, but if that money's gonna be paying off bonds, they may or may not have that ability, is that correct?
Yeah, if there's, if there's debt overlaying, then they will, they cannot release it back, they have to, they can release any and up to what is to pay the, the bond, so that's a critically good question. Yep, so, yeah, there's, the idea is, if there's a development project and there is no borrowing, then, then they're free to release that back to its local units, but, but Scott had a really good question, if, if there is more excess beyond what is borrowed, they can only give back what is not allocated for, for servicing debt, and then they have to capture to pay their bond, that's, that's, if it makes sense.
I would like a definition of improvement. If, if the residential TIF is there, fifteen grain bins, is that improvement, and that assessment is captured? It's not residential? I, I don't know.
Yeah, so, so it's based upon its belief, and so, I, I'll have to specify the, the details, but commercial TIFs only capture commercial development, industrial development, it doesn't capture homes, so they can't, redevelopment commissions can't capture that off of home values.
But farms are businesses, many, many farms are businesses.
I think there's, yeah, depending on what category they fall into, but, but this is specifically for, for residential development, so-
And so, somebody puts up two homes, one here and one here, then, then that additional assessment is captured by the redevelopment commission?
Correct.
Okay, but grain bins aren't?
Correct. I'll have to get clarity, but it is my understanding, as I'm standing here right now-
Yeah.
-that, that if, the whole point of residential TIF is because they're now collecting that market of assessed value, nothing else. So, even if we put a factory there, which would be really silly, that, that, that wouldn't necessarily fall within the realms of collecting, maybe, this excess, it's assessed value, because it's, it's not targeted, because the resolution clearly delineates these parcels to GLGF to only collect, or to be able to pocket the, the excess funds, but I think I need, there's probably a point of clarity to, to that.
Well, at this point, probably, yeah, since it's here.
Well, I think this is a wonderful idea. What number are we looking at, Mr.? Resolution number?
It is number twenty-one dash oh five.
I was involved with addition, it's on the north side of Rossville, back with Dewey's IGA up there, local CPA and me and another guy. Boy, I'm telling you, that coming up with the money for the streets, sewers and all that stuff, that's tough. And my mom's house was the first one I ever built out there, it sat on a lonely street for a long time, with nobody building next to it. A little worry coming there, but it, it came through all right. We've got a lot of houses out, I don't know if there are, it's a mountain, quite huge. Need that many more, yeah, we need that here, Burlington and Flora.
So, is that what we need to, read this by God only?
It's not an ordinance, so it's-
Just a resolution?
A doctor on voice vote, need one time, one, one time.
Is there anyone here that has an objection to this? That sees a problem with this, so? Okay, go ahead, Steve.
I'm gonna be looking at adopt resolution twenty-two-one oh five.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-two-one oh five, which by title is Flora. The resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Carroll County, Indiana, approving certain matters in connection with the amendment of the Carroll County Consolidated Economic Development Area. And then I call for a vote. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.